Small moment in history. We thank you for coming tonight. As we typically begin, we usually begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Smith, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
We request that all cell phones and pagers be turned to vibrate or off during the course of this meeting. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. And remain standing for the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Boone, superintendent's report.
Good evening. Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. As is our practice monthly, to present a video as part of the superintendent's report to highlight many of the happenings in Norfolk Public Schools and great things that are going on. Tonight, we have a very special video, and it's pretty much a year in review for the 17, 18 school year. So we're very appreciative to Communications Department and Channel 47 for its support and development of this particular video. So I'll ask that you sit back and enjoy a year in review.
Over 250 new teachers gathered at Lake Taylor High School, ready to make a difference at this year's new teacher orientation. This orientation also enabled them to interact with one another and learn as much as they could about the district before the start of school.
Especially when you are a new teacher coming into a district, I think it's just important to collaborate with others that are in the same boat as you, so you realize you're not alone in this, and there are so many resources available and helpful to you. Just don't be afraid to ask.
I think it's great because just trying to come into a new environment and not knowing what you're coming into, they're opening their arms, making us feel welcome, and know that they got our back if we need anything.
Just prior to the start of the school year, approximately 5,000 NPS employees came together for fellowship, food, and fun at the first annual NPS Field Day. Superintendent Dr. Melinda Boone arrived on her very own energy bus and encouraged employees to enjoy themselves by mingling and participating in a wide variety of activities. Virginia Governor Terry McAuliffe and First Lady Dorothy McAuliffe visited Suburban Park Elementary to celebrate the 10 millionth meal served since the inception of the No Kid Hungry Initiative. During their visit, the governor and first lady personally handed out a delicious breakfast to students and then visited a few classrooms.
Well, we know breakfast is the most important meal today. The science is there, and our grandmothers and our parents always told us, and it really is true. We can't concentrate. You can't be hungry for knowledge if you're just plain hungry. We want to make sure that children have the nutrition they need to start off right, to fuel their brains and their bodies, and have a great day.
Every high school senior across the district met with their school counselors recently to go over their high school transcripts to ensure that they are on track for graduation. This academic career planning is being done early in the school year so that every senior knows exactly what they've accomplished and what they must complete to achieve their goals.
It's the first time we've done it, and it's the first time we've done it this early and in such a group. It really is easier, much easier, to get to everyone.
We're going through, checking to make sure that all of our classes are in order and that everything's in line for us to graduate on time. Well, I know what William &amp; Mary's looking for. You know, it's a very intense school. They want high GPAs, and so I definitely know that that's what I'm reaching towards. So I know how far I have until I get to what I'm reaching for.
The conclusion of two journeys were celebrated, as the new Larchmont and Oceanview Elementary Schools held their ribbon-cutting ceremonies.
Just to see this project, to open with all the students and the faculty, the parents, the administration, it is a world-class facility. Our students will get that education that they deserve and go on to become citizens of the world.
You know, bricks and mortar don't educate children. It's what happens in the classroom, what those teachers do, what those leaders, what that support team does. But the building shares that there's a commitment that the community has to where they learn. And so they have new technology, they have brand-new learning spaces, and they have a chance to just grow and thrive beyond what we've all imagined.
The past and present of the West Kent community came together to commemorate the 100th anniversary of WH Taylor Elementary. Guests were invited to visit a museum filled with images from Taylor's past, which brought back great memories of this remarkable school.
When you leave a place, there's a lot of sorrow, but I have so much joy for the people that are here. I just feel like I'm home again, and I just love so many people.
It is exciting. We have been planning this for so long, and just to see it all come together, it's so rewarding. Everyone is so excited to see each other. It's just like one giant family reunion.
Approximately 2,500 5th graders from Norfolk Public Schools visited Naval Station Norfolk for the first-ever STEM Day. While they were on the base, students learned more about science, technology, engineering, and math through hands-on activities provided by the various groups who volunteered to be part of this special day. The Navy also arranged tours of the USS Cole and the USS Gerald R. Ford, along with a variety of other military vehicles. The goal was to get students excited about STEM and introduce the many different career opportunities available to them in the future.
What we're doing is showing them all different kind of exhibits with, you know, our LCACs, landing craft air cushions, some of the aircraft that we have that serve our fleet, and letting them meet the sailors, and we're trying to inspire them, and we're also trying to give them a vision for what they can do with their life, and also why, you know, studying the sciences is so important.
It's just been smiles, wows, ahas. The kids are just so engaged. No child here is asking to go to the bathroom or falling asleep. They are so engaged, and they look like they're walking away with souvenirs and asking lots of great questions. So it's been a great opportunity for these 5th graders.
Norfolk Public Schools is committed to providing students of all ages with the computer science skills they'll need in the future. To support this effort, the district took a prominent role in Virginia's inaugural Family Code Night at Slover Library.
It's just a wonderful learning experience, and it really gets kids going on the path towards learning computer science, and really, more important than anything, believing that computer science is within their reach, because it is for any kid today. Any kid can learn computer science, and the critical thing is to start in the K-5 years, because that's when that belief is formed, and that inspires the track they can be on for the rest of their lives.
Coding remained at the forefront throughout the school year, especially during the International Week of Code. During the week, students in Gramby High School's marketing class broadened their horizons as they built webpages for advertising purposes.
I never thought it would be something I would do, because I'm not a very, like, technical person. Like, I'm more just like textbook and paper and pencil, but like, it's definitely like, made me realize that there are other opportunities out there for me, and it's never too late to start.
At the Academy of International Studies at Rosemont, middle school students did their coding in the form of games. Although they were having fun, these 6th graders were also using problem-solving skills and logic to get the game to respond to their commands.
We're doing block coding where we take drag-out blocks, and we try to fix the game to actually get to our goal. And right now, we're trying to get the squirrel from Ice Age to get to the nut without making them fall or go into the water.
The kids enjoy coding. It's taking what they learned in math and science class and problem-solving, putting it all together, and it makes it fun. So anytime the kids have fun, they look at it as solving problems in a video game, and from the outside, it's they're writing code. They're writing the computer programs and writing the games.
Even the school system's youngest students are well-versed at coding. Berkeley Campustella Early Childhood Center hosted a Daymax showcase that enabled pre-K students to share their knowledge of coding with community members.
I think we're preparing them to be critical thinkers. We're preparing them to learn new things with technology. Maybe they can be excited by what they're learning. Somebody might be an engineer, and use what they're learning now to fuel their excitement when they go to kindergarten, first grade. Most of them will go to the STEM school, and you know, who knows? It could be a lifelong learning experience for them. It might be a potential job in their future.
Over 100 students in grades 3 through 6 spent a Saturday at Nautilus competing at the annual District-wide Science Fair. Participants for the fair included all the science fair winners from each elementary and middle school. Volunteer judges from a variety of backgrounds were impressed with the students' knowledge of their projects and the middle school PowerPoint presentations.
It's one of the few times as an adult, you can interact with so many different kids at so many different grade levels, and here, it's inspiring to see that they're doing this science, you know, getting involved and doing different things, the ideas that they come up with. Some of them I've never even heard of, and it's amazing that, you know, you learn from what they're doing as well.
The NPS Department of Music Education hosted the 22nd Annual Urban Music Leadership Conference. This organization is a network of music professionals made up of school administrators and classroom instructors. Their purpose is to explore the opportunities music programs across the nation provide to their students.
It's important that we see the programs that are initiated here and to know that music is flourishing here in the Norfolk Public Schools.
Advanced art students from Norfolk Public Schools visited Old Dominion University for an exclusive tour of their art facilities. Thanks to this unique partnership, these high school students were able to see numerous classrooms, labs, and studios within the new Berry Arts Building. They also got the opportunity to talk directly with professors and students from different concentration areas, and ultimately visualize what life could look like for them after graduation.
I'm really thankful, you know. This is so much different from just your usual college tour where you're in a group of 30 kids. It's a lot more personal. We had the opportunity to speak with professors and to go and see things up close. This isn't, you know, some sort of website advertisement video. This is real and personal.
It was an impressive year in sports, as our student athletes achieved big honors and accomplishments. Andrew Lyons led Maury's volleyball team to the top ranking in the area as he was named 5A State Player of the Year. For the first time in a long time, all five high school football teams made the playoffs in the same season. Booker T. Washington's heavyweight Tyrese Sutton capped an impressive career with a fourth-place finish in the state tournament. Gramby's Kaylee Everett made history by winning the 6A regional diving title. Norview High Girls Basketball qualified for the state tournament for the first time in over 20 years, while the Lake Taylor Girls took home the 4A regional title and made it to the state finals. Point guard Janiah Quinterly and forward Jordan Poole made the first team All-State. After years of heartache, the Lake Taylor Boys reached the top, defeating John Handley in double overtime to win the school's first boys' state basketball title. Leading the way was forward Darian Sebron, who was named Class 4A Player of the Year, while Kenny Brown was named State Coach of the Year. 2018 saw our first district pole vaulting team under one coach and produced a regional champion from Booker T. Washington, Dejay McDonald. And Maury's Boys and Girls Tennis Teams were regional champions. Virginia Governor Ralph Northam stopped by Norview High School during Teacher Appreciation Week. He began his visit by talking with educators about their concerns and expressing his gratitude to teachers for what they do on a daily basis. After the meeting, Governor Northam took on the role of teacher as he taught AP Biology and Anatomy students.
I was really impressed with what they knew about anatomy and also about physiology, how electricity moves through our bodies, but, you know, then when we talked about ethics, I was always fascinated. They'd just hear where different people are coming from.
Over 1,700 seniors crossed the stage during Norfolk Public Schools' five high school graduation ceremonies at the Ted Constant Convocation Center on the campus of Old Dominion University. This year's graduating class was very ambitious, with two Gates Scholars and a scholarship total nearing $70 million. Congratulations to the class of 2018.
That's a quick, quick year in review, and as I was meeting with the folks in Communications and Channel 47, they were sharing how difficult it was to put together a video that was just seven minutes long and reasonable in size. So we had so many great things to share from last year, and we look forward to each month bringing highlights of the work in the district to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. It is now time for our public comment, and I know that during the latter part of the school year, we, prior to starting with the public comment, we had a break where we showcased one of our students with an art, and since it's the summertime, we don't want to bring them in, but we are going to definitely get started with that as the school year begins, and we'll also be welcoming our student representative to the board at that time as well. So with that being said, for a public comment, when your name is called, please follow these steps. Come forward to the speaker's podium. The podium can be adjusted to suit your height. State your name and whether or not you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you are employed by the system. State your position and give your facts and other relevant data. If you represent a group or an organization, ask the others to rise and be recognized. Please give any written statements or supporting material to the deputy clerk for the record. Speakers are limited to a one-time appearance of three minutes. When the clerk, when the deputy clerk signals your time is up, please quickly end your comments and be seated. The school board does not respond to citizen remarks at the time that they are given. Mr. Butts?
So, Madam Chair, we have a total of seven speakers for today, the first two being Ms. Shirley, it's kind of loud, Ms. Shirley Cofino- Reader, followed by Ms. Helen Brown.
Good evening, friends. Can you hear me?
Good evening.
Yes? I'm on my tippy toes. As the chair, oh, magic. Thank you. As the Chair of the Norfolk Commission for Persons with Disabilities, I congratulate you. We met a couple of months ago during the election, and we got to know each other, and we know we have the same goals. We must work to improve the findings of the Special Education Report by raising the accessible, the acceptable passing level, state targets from failing of five of the 24 targets. We must raise our graduation rate for kids with disabilities from 33 and 81% to at least 65%. We must increase our parent guardian participation for the now-reported 28.57% to the state target of closer to 72%. We must lower the student dropout rate of 3.5% and make it easier and friendly for parents and guardians to work through the Norfolk system to gain a better education for our students with disabilities, and where necessary, improve the school environment. I am excited to report that our commission has reached a goal set earlier this year that will have free training on August 28th by PIGEC to help create a support system to guide parents and guardians as they work through the maze of IEP meetings and determines that determines the education of the children. This might encourage the increase of the parent involvement in their children's education. I invite you all to attend the class. It's free. It's being held at the Norfolk Recreation Center, Prime Plus, and more information will be done, will be sent out. We hope you will join us, and we hope we can join you to improve the system that has been broken for too long. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Helen Brown. I came to Norfolk 51 years ago to teach special education and have been involved, once I was forced to retire for health reasons, with the Commission for Persons with Disabilities and other agencies related to people with disabilities. I just want to smile and say congratulations to everyone up there. We have tried and will continue to try, as members of the commission, to work with especially Dr. Boone and the members of the commission, of the Special Education Department. We find that it is imperative that the members of the school board understand the difficulties that some parents are having trying to get the proper placement for their children. And we just are going to continue, as Shirley said, get parents to come in, or people who are willing to volunteer, take the course, to accompany parents to meetings so that they can help them understand the processes that are going on. I have sat in on IEP meetings, and sometimes it's, it was very difficult for the parents to understand what was happening because they did not know what to expect. So we just would like your support, and we certainly will help you and support anything that we can do to benefit the children with disabilities and their parents in dealing with the process. Look forward to a great year working together. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Yvonne Wagner, to be followed by Mr. Charles Futrell.
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Chairman, Vice Chair, Mr. Carlos Clanton. Congratulations to you all in the school board. We're looking for good things for you all. Council Superintendent Boone, my name is Yvonne Wagner, 1100 Merrimack Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia 23504. I'm a concerned constituent of Norfolk, Virginia, and a proud 1969 alumni of Booker T. Washington High School, and I have some of my high school alumni here with us and members of the concerned I'm here to address the following concerns. First of all, educational redesign. All the feeder schools to Booker T. Washington High School are non-accredited. What additional support is being provided to the elementary and middle schools that feed into Booker T.? What is the instructional leadership plan designed to address the needs of the students from the middle and elementary schools? No strategic plan. They are usually placed on the shelf and not monitored. Where is the equity? Are we setting the school up for failure? Athletic facilities. When will the students be allowed to practice and participate at their own school versus having the home games, away games, and away games at another site? Why are the athletic funds from Booker T. Washington High School being used? Why are the athletic funds from Booker T. Washington High School being used when the facilities are not responsible, when we're not, facilities are being, are responsibility of Norfolk Public Schools and the city of Norfolk? Track, the tennis court, softball field, baseball field, soccer, bleachers in the gymnasium, lights in the gymnasium, locker room facilities, et cetera. Why do they have to go somewhere else? Where is the equity? Building ambience, mold, air conditioning, cleanliness of the building, and other outside grounds. Curve appeal. Where is the equity? Their mold was supposed to have been removed. We've asked for a certificate. We never saw one. Respect. For months, we have been asking about the new proposal for the CTE school. We have listened to reports from other high schools and their communities, and we have not been given the respect and the same opportunities as the other communities to provide input in allowing us to be a part of its transition and be able to discuss with knowledge and information to the community as to how it will benefit our kids. Where is the equity? CTE. What and where is the, there's the written plan that provides answers to all the questions from the community concerning the following. Number of seats provided to BTW students. Why do we have only 500 seats and 1,000 choice? We question the rezoning and how it is equitable for all schools. Our students are bussed out, but not bussed in. Will the program be designed for all students to include students with disabilities? Is it going to be a regional school where we cannot have athletics? What is the public-private partnership, and how does that benefit our students and the staff?
Ms. Wagner?
Yes.
Three minutes.
Okay, I'm almost finished. All of this could have been addressed if we had had the opportunity to meet the community and tell us what this is all about. Finally, we want Booker T. Washington High School to provide a full range of academic, athletics, and school opportunities as every student in each of the other high schools and a facility that we will be proud to acknowledge as our school. We will not continue to be ignored. We will not accept subsstandard treatment for students and staff who call Booker T. Washington High School their home. Thank you.
Hi, I'm here to speak on behalf of Courtney. Charles, Charles Futrell. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I know, I'm not, I'm not really sure, like, the whole situation, but it was some, some comments that was being made about Ms. Courtney. She's a schoolteacher, and I'm just here to speak on her behalf. It was a comment made about the hood or something like that, and I just wanted to say that I know for a fact that she did not mean that in any type of way, saying the hood. I am from there, and when I was going to school, she took me in, you know, and I used to live with her. I just wanted to let you guys know that this is a really good lady, Ms. Courtney. I cannot pronounce her last name. It's like Deguaza or something crazy like that, but she's a really amazing person, and like, she's done a lot for me. Like, she, she took me in, she called me her son. You know, I ate when they ate. I had dreams of doing music. She paid for it out of her own pocket. I know for a fact that she didn't mean anything by that comment, and that's what I'm here to tell you guys.
Our next speaker is Ms. Mary Simpson-Jones, to be followed by Ms. Vivian Hester.
Good evening. My name is Mary Simpson-Jones. First, I want to congratulate all of you all in your position and welcome for a good year. Ms. Webberly, upon retirement, made me realize that I had been coming to the school board meetings and to city council meetings for over 20 years. So I was still becoming, even though I don't have children, I am involved with Norfolk Public School. As we look around and we saw all those great videos, everything at the schools are not like that. We need to deal with reality about at Zelia Garden where I was accused or something, and how they had an in-house investigation, and if I did not do a Freedom of Information Act, I would have not known. And the end result came from the superintendent, and how I was treated as though I was like a felon, and in my whole lifespan, I have dealt with children, special head start for over 15 years. And it's bad to say, that year looking back, I was, I was having hip replacement while I was dancing, some of you all. So you know how I feel looking at that, and I'm not able to move. But yeah, I'm accused of things and all. It was the investigator over there who took a report. I didn't know what happened with the report, and I still would like to know what happened and how they came about their answer, because it is a demolish of my integrity, my name, and all. Secondly, I would like to congratulate you all for making a transparency of the agenda on the internet. I was glad to see that this morning, to see that we would know what would be talked about on the agenda. Many years ago, we used to get a paper as we came in to see what Many years ago, we used to get a paper as we came in to see what was going on. Now we get something on PowerPoint which sometimes is not legible if you don't have your reading glasses. And when Janelle Banks was here, it was evidence that it was visible and you couldn't read it. So you need to go back and find out what fonts or whatever is needed so everyone can see what is going on. And I'd like to thank all of you all for your duties and your job. Thank you.
My name is Vivian Hester and I represent the concerned citizens of Booker T. Washington High School. I would like to welcome the new members to the board and I would like to invite you to be a part of what we are trying to do for Booker T. Washington High School. For the last two years, we have been coming to this body asking for equity for Booker T. Washington High School. Last year, we were given information that we would be giving Booker T. a new program and we were very excited about that. We understand that there are some other communities getting programs and construction projects and so forth. The only thing that continues to bother us is that we have asked many times for the board and the superintendent to come to the Booker T. Washington community and to share with us your plans. And we have been unable to hear from you. We have been unable to secure any kind of information for the families in Booker T. Washington High School. At our last meeting here with you, you said that we would be bringing in the program a little at a time. Well, my question is, how will the students know what classes to sign up for? If it's not being publicized, if the students have not received any information, if parents don't know? I think it's very unfortunate that the families in the Booker T. Washington area feel left out, they feel disrespected and they feel overlooked. And I don't believe that this body wants that kind of feeling hanging over such a strong and vital part of the city. Again, I'm here inviting you to come, talk to our community, give us information so that we can share it with our civic leagues, with our students and be prepared for a wonderful year. And again, thank you for an opportunity to speak to you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Thomas Calhoun to be followed by Ms. Ashley Jackson.
Madam Chair, school board members, good evening. My name is Thomas Calhoun. I'm a 50-year resident of the city and currently the president of Norfolk Federation of Teachers. I got a call earlier today from a person who was very upset, very surprising call. Never would have guessed it, but the call was about her having been a loyal, faithful donor to the Norfolk Education Foundation. He's very upset about it. Wanted my advice on whether he should speak out or not. For several reasons, I advise sir not to do so. But the more I thought about it, the more I understood that it was time that I came and said what I had to say. So here I am and I'm going to say it and be done with it. I think you voted yourself into a very odd predicament when you voted to put the vice chair where he is now. I think it's very odd. It seemed like it could have waited. And that was fine. Let that go. Then I got the call today and started thinking some more. Then I started hearing things and been hearing things for two weeks about your predicament. And what I hear is that you are considering voting to drop the lawsuit. And I've heard it over and over, especially the last few days. So I say, well, that makes sense. You get to have that predicament, you get out the predicament by making the predicament disappear. It's one way out of it. So I say what I would come ask you, Madam Chair. Just, I just need to ask. You can't answer, that's fine. I understand that. Who gets to vote? Who gets to vote on whether you all drop this lawsuit? You voted, Mr. Jordan, I believe has voted, Ms. Bessine, I think has voted. We've got four new votes. Does the vice chair get to vote? Does he get to vote whether you drop the lawsuit against his previous organization than him? Maybe this is not true. I don't know. But I guess we'll find out in the near future whether this is true or not, whether the things I'm hearing are true, whether you're going to take this vote and we're going to know who voted. When you do, a lot of you are new in what you do behind closed doors. Well, we voted for you and we put you there and we're going to be answered to. So you can vote behind closed doors or whatever you want to do, but it'll get out. I'm going to find out and the city's going to find out who's voting on this. Take all the votes you want. Who's voting? Find out. I'm going to be back.
Thank you. My name's Ashley Jackson. I'm NPS alumni, Booker T. Washington's class of 2013 valedictorian. I'm here on behalf of Courtney Jungba. I'm a little bit more well-invested with the situation than Charles was, but the terminology that she used, I feel like is being blown out of proportion, given the situation in the community that she's in. She's devoted her career to, how do I say this? For the lack of a better term, she's devoted her career to relating to her students on a different level than some of my other teachers have. I can piggyback on some of the issues that Booker T. has had and I feel like those should also be addressed. But the terminology that she used, given her situation in the community that she's in, I don't think was highly inappropriate. Had it been another situation in another community, it wouldn't have been deemed inappropriate. It's only being deemed inappropriate for the community that she presented the terminology to. In the community that she teaches in, she relates to her students. That's the terminology that she uses and that's how she relates to her students. I have personally seen as a class, as a guest speaker in her class, that when presented with a situation that she can't handle, she relates to those students on a different level and she will handle that situation accordingly, using terminology that they can understand. I just don't think that she should be punished for relating to her students and devoting her career to doing so. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Ms. Melissa Hazen.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Melissa Hazen. I am Booker T. Washington's class of 2012 salutatorian. I also happen to be a prior student of Ms. Courtney. And I'm not here to tell y'all how to do your job because y'all don't know how to do mine's and y'all wouldn't tell me how to do mine. But what I am here to tell y'all is how she's touched my life. As a student in a school where I transferred to Booker T. halfway through my high school career, I knew maybe four people in the entire building and most of those people were not very fond of me coming in there and being louder than I probably should have been. I'm a very outspoken individual and I'm not shy and I didn't go over too well when I started there. But she helped me find a place where I could be comfortable in a new and unsettling environment. She helped me adjust during a very difficult time in my life. She made, she went out of her way for people she didn't have to go out of her way for. And I think it was last year, might have been the year before that, I walked into a doctor's office pregnant with my daughter and there she was and she said, Melissa, I haven't seen you in forever. How have you been? And we stood there and we talked because she remembered me, she remembered my situation, she remembered my family and she cared. And I don't know many teachers who actually do that. I know a lot of them who come for the paycheck, which isn't, isn't great, but it's a job. But she didn't do that. She goes to work every day because she cares about our kids. She cares about people. And there isn't another teacher I would trust my daughter to that I can think of right now. I had a lot of good teachers, but in my top five, she's up there. And I think that if you're hasty in this decision and you let your feelings about a mistake that she has made get ahead of yourselves, you will be doing this city a tremendous disservice. She knows how to use a minimal budget and to make it shine for students that don't have many people that care about them like she does. She knows how, she goes out of her way to get grants, to take them on exciting adventures. She was going to take them ocean, to dolphin watching before that post about the zoo came up. It got canceled because of weather. How many teachers do you know go out of their way to do things like that for their kids? How many? Because I don't know many. And I'm not saying Norfolk Public Schools is short on good teachers, but I am saying that in these days and age, when money is short and time is of the essence, getting rid of an asset like that would be a bad move. But that's my point. I was blessed to have her in my life and I hope y'all take the opinions of her students very seriously. So thank you for your time and thanks for listening.
Madam Chair, that concludes our speakers for tonight.
Thank you very much. It's now time to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a? Yes.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the, to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? A second? It's been moved improperly seconded. Mr. Butts?
Ms. Bessine?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye. Okay, moving on to the discussion portion of our meeting, and I know normally we have a financial report, but because it's July, we're going to be moving that over to August and we'll have double reports at that time if anybody was looking for following the numbers. But Dr. Boone, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to you for our discussion agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. As you will recall, Norfolk Public School Board for the last several years has addressed socio-economically diverse preschool opportunities, again, in improving the outcomes for all students. It has been part of the board's legislative agenda for a couple of years and during this most recent budget cycle, we proposed to the board the opportunity to create a local option pre-K program. During the same period of time, we've lost preschool seats due to declining enrollment. The state's methodology and formula for addressing pre-K looks at enrollment and because our enrollment numbers were down, we have lost preschool seats in the last two years. And what is interesting, that's only part, should only be part of the decision-making. You should also look at the challenges that a community faces and our students face and not just make it about, you know, how many seats do you have in kindergarten and therefore make those decisions. And so through all of the discussion and the budget process, the board approved creating a local option pre-K program that would, again, not be driven solely by the eligibility criteria that the state has for the Virginia Preschool Initiative and the federal add-on with Virginia Preschool Initiative Plus, VPI Plus. And this allows us to look at who are the children that are falling into a gap potentially and could utilize pre-K services, but don't fall at that 200-plus level of eligibility based on poverty. And then where are the other parents who would love for their children to have an opportunity for a pre-K experience with fully licensed and degree teachers and great curriculum and programs that are going on? So with that, the board approving that action and the funding that we received, we've been able to move forward with establishing criteria and process for bringing onboard the opportunity for, and I'm doing my math, 18 times 3, 54, 54 students in the district. So Ms. Malinak, would you like to come up and, and Ms. Jamie Malinak is our senior director for federal programs and Title I. And what we are presenting to you tonight is the backdrop for what we've done and what, how we would like to go forward as it relates to serving students in this community and what is a very unique opportunity. When I was mentioning in a superintendent's meeting back in May that this is what we were considering, several school board members, several superintendents said, you know, that's an interesting thing. It may be something we should look into. So we are happy to be able to launch this this fall. So Ms. Malinak?
Sure. So I was very excited to see this as being an opportunity. I know I've spoke to many of the board members and certainly many parents in the community about this program and VPI, VPI and VPI Plus, as Dr. Boone mentioned, there definitely is criteria regarding income. But as many families will tell me that are deemed ineligible for that program, income is only one factor, only one risk factor. So the idea that we were able to fund these 54 slots with the local budget and take away the requirement for income is certainly exciting to the community. And I've already been talking to a few parents that have called to inquire about some status and when I explained that this is the, something we're working on and working through the logistics, they seem to be very excited about the possibility. So currently, we are still working on the logistics. The things that were attached to the board presentation for tonight were the proposed tuition rates and I believe Dr. Boone is angling for and hoping for no tuition for this first year anyway, so it would be, it would be free, but this would be the proposed tuition. And this is based on kind of doing some research that other districts around the country do, both public school as well as private organizations that provide preschool. Many of them do before and after-school care, so we looked at it a little bit differently. Worked with the budget department to determine what is our per-pupil cost, factoring in a variety of things, but mostly the salary and the benefits of the teachers and the paraprofessionals that work in the classroom. And so basing all of that, using the federal poverty level bands as guides, we kind of came up with this monthly income tuition for future use and for future consideration. But hopefully, we won't be looking too much at that for this year. And looking at the, the other attachment was a letter, sort of a draft letter that's modeled after the same acceptance letter we used for our VPI program, just kind of indicating to the parents what they're being accepted into and asking them to sort of sign an agreement that they will, will come, they will be there, they will attend school on a regular basis, which is something that we also talk with our VPI and VPI Plus families. The locations, logistics, transportation is all currently being worked through. As previously discussed by Dr. Boone, we hope to have a class, we will have a class at Berkeley Camp Estella, NTC, and then there's the logistics of those 18 other slots. And Dr. Boone, if you want to talk a little bit more about that vision, I certainly will defer to you. But that's sort of where we are in the process. Very excited to hopefully begin to start offering these spots to the families that are ineligible for VPI and VPI Plus and hope to do that very soon.
Thank you, Ms. Malinak. As she indicated, because this has been fully funded through our budget this year, we would like to launch this at with no-cost tuition to families in this initial year, particularly to see what the level of interest is as well as the ability to have socio-economically diverse classrooms. We also want to be able to monitor and look at performance over time of students in these classrooms to see what's the difference between those that are not diverse and yet have high-quality curriculum and those that have that level of diversity and similar high, and the same high-quality curriculum. As we, you know, so we, transparency show you the sliding As we, you know, so we, transparency show you the sliding fee scale, and particularly, we're looking to, for parents that fall outside of those guidelines for VPI eligibility. So, those in that next band, if you will, those that, you know, some maybe five dollars over the eligibility criteria working, and the idea of, of paying, you know, a few thousand dollars a year for, for high-quality pre-K is prohibitive. And so, we're looking to, to blend with, with students from that income level and other income levels, so that we really have a mixed-income model. We also are looking for the opportunity, as, as Ms. Malinak indicated, to physical classes other this way, but also being able to blend some additional students, again, into our VPI classrooms that have the eligibility criterion, where we can fill some slots there in the local option that, that we're paying for, again, to create diversity, and also see what those classrooms look like. So, I, I guess what I'm asking for tonight is for the Board to approve the no-tuition option, for us to launch the local option pre-K for the eighteen, nineteen school year. You may ask, well, what happens in the future? Again, we want to look at participation level, I anticipated that. Look at participation levels, and, and look at, again, what the level of funding commitment. I mean, Council's funding for Norfolk Public Schools this year has allowed us to be able to accomplish this. And because we have a new foundation, a new baseline, you know, the future's still in discussions, but again, we're hoping to be able to continue this going forward, but at least we wanted to show, down the road, if we have to consider tuition, what it may begin to look like. But we can operate for these fifty-four students within the budget that is designed in, in, in the approved School Board budget. So, Madam Chair, Ms. Malinak and I, and Ms. Ingram, should there be financial questions? We're, we're all prepared to answer those.
Questions from the Board?
So, you addressed one of my questions about what will happen in the future, but what, oh, sorry. I'm excited about this effort, first of all. I think it's, I think it's great. I think it's where we, what we should aim to do district-wide. I'm curious about discussions around the distribution, the mixed-income distribution and marketing. What have, what has taken place so far along those lines?
Well, let me start, and, and Jamie can certainly add the other details. What I didn't realize, so we were getting into the, to the development of how we would operationalize this, we have families who have applied for VPI and have fallen outside of the income guidelines. So, we actually have a set of applications, and I'll let Jamie talk about those, that we're ready to vet.
We, we do exactly what she said. When we are advertising for VPI and VPI Plus, and beginning the acceptance process, or I'm sorry, the application process in February, we often get a, a pretty large chunk of families that just don't qualify, either on income or on the local criteria that is offered through VPI. And so, we do have a, a pocket of them, fifty-one to be precise at this moment, that we could look at offering these classes to them. And so, the, going forward, if we were to do this, especially if we were going to have it be tuition, we would probably want to market that a little bit differently, so families knew that that was going to be an option going forward. That was not done, because of course, we start this process in February, and the budget wasn't approved until May. So, you know, we really couldn't advertise for something that we weren't even sure was going to exist. So, going forward, we might want to look at what that looks like and really market it. But for now, we do already have a group of parents that we could serve, just based on the fact that they have submitted an application already.
And meet the goal, Board's goals of economically diverse.
And I've been playing with those fifty-one and sort of seeing how that works out, and, and, and we can make it look very diverse. It looks actually really great on paper, so.
Okay. Well, that, that's good to hear. I'm, I guess I'm, was looking for more specifics, too, about are they just outside, you know, are those that do apply? There may be certain characteristics about those who apply, because their understanding of VPI Plus, VPI and VPI Plus is, you know, what it is. They are, they know what the criteria is. So, those that apply may be different than those who, if we open it up and say, this is for everyone, then you may get, you know, a broader range, income-wise.
Absolutely.
And we can certainly provide the Board, once we've gone through the selection process, what the income ranges look like for those who are participating. I think that would be very appropriate to share, you know, what those ranges look like. But we currently, again, as, as we sat down and have been working on this for the last several weeks, have seen very clearly that we have folks that just missed the cutoff, and those that are well above, well, well above.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, so I'd just like to piggyback on that and maybe offer that we consider going a little deeper, and just actually define some bands, a third, a third, a third, a third that's in the middle, that can include those that you always described that are outside of the, the current rules, those that we know that fall within the, the current rules, and then others that are left. And then, that way, we would be able to start off the pilot with an economic mix that at least we have targeted. We, we can't necessarily guarantee the result, but at least we have targeted. And then, when the applications come in, when it goes to the lottery, you may find that there are those who are in one-third, who we may find we don't need to do the lottery at all. We may find we have a large number in the middle, and then the lottery would kick in for them. But I think it's important that we make some type of effort of defining the mix, at least what our goal is, so that we can try to start from the beginning, you know, with, with that in mind. So, I don't know what those numbers are, I don't, but I, I do think, to the extent that perhaps you can consider defining it a little deeper, and then have that tied to the application pool and the lottery, I think we should do that. The other piece associated with the lottery, I know at one time, and we still may have committees that are out there working on lotteries with the specialty programs and all of that, sometimes when we open up opportunities, we find that those that get the opportunity are those that already have the opportunity. And I know there's been concerns in the past about, you know, who gets in the Gant, who gets in ADL, who gets in the Grand B, who gets an IB program. And oftentimes, we will find those who are, my words, part of the connected class, get connected in. So, we heard earlier about the issue around equity. So, I would even say that as we look at this program and others, that we may even have a, a pool for family and friends, if you will. We know that we encourage our staff to consider many of our programs, but that we be very conscientious and intentional about making sure that we are providing the opportunities for these families that we have heard for years, that want to have this opportunity, before we just, all the slots get sucked up by family and friends, if you understand.
And, and if, the family and friends comment is received. To that point, I, I really, if you look in the band, if you look at the monthly income, should we go to tuition? When you look at that band that falls from that two-hundred-and-one to two-hundred-and-fifty percentile, those are many of those who, again, have seen the opportunity for a pre-K and fall outside of the eligibility, and those are, I, I think we have a, a good number of those applications, right off the bat, who normally, again, over the line, can't get the, the pre-K without cost, and yet can't afford pre-K on their own, so.
Matter of fact, we have sixteen of those, just out of the fifteen, or the fifty-some that we, that we have that are ineligible. They all fall right in that band, so.
I have a question. So, Ms. Malinak, are you saying from the fifty-one applicants that you have, that you, you may have the variety that you need in order to perhaps do the third, third, third model?
Yes, as I was playing around today, going through and seeing what we could do, and with the locations that we have sort of identified, it, it really is, and as you were mentioning the third, third, and third, it was funny, because I looked down real quick, and yes, I have everything color-coded, so I can see it real quick. And I think we really kind of achieved that where we are, almost naturally, without really having to, you know, to do much else with it, so.
And since this is a pilot, and there really aren't any other divisions that I'm aware of, and that you had mentioned before, Dr. Boone, that have done this before, what do you all think as far as data collection? What, what types of things do you think you're going to, to look at for this, and do we want to set any measures?
I think that's a great question. I know one of the things that, whatever we decide to do, we already have a mechanism in place that VDOE has started, I think it was, this is going into our third year, where every pre-K student has to be coded with their, they have an STI number, they have to be coded as whether they're Title I-funded preschool, VPI preschool, VPI Plus preschool, local-funded preschool, if that exists. And so, they get coded into synergy that way, so that when they do the September thirtieth report, or the fall report, the spring report, that's extracted and reported to the state. So, we can already code those kids as a local option, so that when we then look at test data, whether it be PALS, or some of the other test measures that we have, or if we want to look at some other measure, we already have them coded, and we should be able to extract that pretty quickly.
Ultimately, our goal is really, again, to, to be able to see the impact of a mixed-income classroom, and, and its, its impact on student academic achievement over time. So, we will be doing those same preschool assessments. We have a very strong curriculum for pre-K. We have some teachers that have met the higher standards for, in terms of their certifications for pre-K. And so, that's, that's what we are pairing with. So, we're going to really be looking at the very same data points that we have for all of our other VPI classrooms, to see if that progress happens sooner. What do we know when students come in and they take that entry, PALS? And so, what does that PALS data look like for this mixed-in, this local-option classroom versus some of the VPI classrooms? What does growth look like over time? So, that's what we're going to be using as our metrics, really to see, one, are, are, do these preschool students in these classrooms thrive, as well as those in other classrooms? And then, unfortunately, we'd also be looking at what's the gap in achievement as pre-K students from those classes that are not socio-economically diverse, and those that are.
I would, I would recommend that with the data that we collect, that we seriously look at data for possible publication, too, because if this is a first, and just as we came back from our conference in Richmond, there were a lot of pilots and prototypes being discussed, and I would look at it as, you know, us being the pioneers in this effort, and collect the data, knowing that we could be publishing it, whatever the outcomes might be. Madam Chair.
So, you looking at Dr. Bailey?
There you go. Um, Ms. Bassin?
I would also caution us, or not caution us, but I would like us to be intentional about what happens once they graduate from pre-K, because we know the pre-K fade-out, those, you know, they go back, when they, when children go back into economically isolated environments, they kind of slip backwards. So, I think we also have to be thinking forward, thinking about that, as they move from, to kindergarten, first grade, you know, and be very intentional with this group.
What were the two locations that you had already identified?
Berkeley Camp Estella and NTC.
Are you looking at the possibility of kind of spreading it out, so that's different parts of the city, and families in different areas of the city have this opportunity, so as you're looking for the third slot, could it look like even in a different region?
Yeah, so with, with the other fifty-four slots, what Dr. Boone and I, and Dr. Rogers had sort of talked about was the idea of, and Dr. Boone was very clear that she wanted, like, you know, three, four, five students, so that it's truly a mixed income, and it's not just one student here, one student at this school, just because there's a space there. So, in looking at that, I've sort of highlighted areas that I know have space where we could put five or six kids and truly make it mixed income, and they're sort of sprinkled, well, those three are more centrally located, which makes it easier for all over, yes, so that they're, because those two classes, like, I'm sure you're thinking, are to the south and to the east, this would be a little bit more centrally located, and I think that will help, looking at, trying to keep it geographical, so that, and we have, of the fifty-one students, they are all over. They're, they're not even concentrated in one area, so we're looking at the transportation piece, and trying to get them as close to their community as possible for that location.
So, I misunderstood, because I thought you were keeping the classes together, but what you're doing is you're taking six kids and putting them into an existing class?
Just for those eighteen, those last eighteen slots.
Those last eighteen? So, they'll be spread around.
There are two defined classes. One at Berkeley Camp Estella, one at Norfolk Technical Center.
Right.
And then, the third one, again, where we haven't, other than placing students of different economic range into a classroom, it's more of a natural mix to see, okay, where we created these other two classes, what happens when we intersperse students in there? But, you know, and, and as Jamie said, the, you know, you couldn't research this if you only had one or two students in a class of sixteen. So, as we were talking about, we're looking at five or six, almost a third of the class, then being, so we could have three, we could have three additional sites by accomplishing the, the other eighteen students showing up in three different classrooms, and so, that's where we get to the other portions of the city.
So, you'll take those three groups of six and put them in different locations?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Well, additional comments. So, I think it was May twenty thirteen, we brought in Richard Collenberg from the Century Foundation, that was kind of a precursor to the work we started with Tracy Richter. They have done extensive research around the country on mixed income, as they call it, universal pre-K, three-year-olds and four-year-olds. So, I would recommend that as part of that effort, we look at that research, and also may find that they may have some interest in partnering with us. For the last, I can't remember now, four, five years, been working with the New E3 School as part of their Education Advisory Committee. They've also been doing some work in that regard, and I know that Governor Northam has just brought in a young lady, I can't think of her name, from Louisiana, who did a lot of work and effort around this there. So, I think if we reach out to, to the Governor's Cabinet, the Governor's Office, as well as the Century Foundation, I know the E3 School has been working with the, the money people in the General Assembly, we might find some additional support for this effort, both on the research side and on the funding side, if we're able to find some working relationship there.
The Century Foundation?
The Century, yeah. TCF.org is the, is the website, yeah.
Mr. Jordan, do they follow the students outside of E3?
Well, I think that's under development, but I just wanted to, because in partnership with Norfolk Public Schools, I think part of that is being explored, but.
And that's exactly what I was going to say. We brought in additional pre-K and kindergarten assessments as a result of our partnering with University of Virginia, with the work that they are doing with the E3. So, we've, we've been working with them to, to bring the opportunity to collect more longitudinal data.
So, what I hear from Dr. Boone is that you need a motion for us to adopt a no-tuition pre-K option for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year.
Madam Chair, a move that we, we adopt the local option pre-K as presented by the superintendent.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. We're, we're really excited about launching this issue.
Very nice. Thank you.
Okay, one item that we had to move, because of time constraints, we're going to do it now. We're actually doing pretty good with time, and that would be moving the academic and accountability updates. We moved that from the workshop to this portion of the discussion, so, Dr. Bailey?
Thank you. Dr. Gabriel, members of the Board, as Dr. Ba- Uh, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, as Dr. Bailey comes to the microphone, we wanted to have an opportunity to lay out how we, how and when we will, and pretty much when we'll be presenting, uh, the various aspects of, of student achievement and accountability data to the board, uh, particularly as we move into now the first, uh, utilization of the new methodology as it relates to school accreditation and that new process. So, Dr. Bailey?
Thank you, Dr. Boone, and good evening, Dr. Gabriel and members of the board. Um, what you have before you is information that we get from Virginia Department of Education. Every year, they send it out to all districts. And it gives us a timeline of when they will release information as it relates to SOL pass rates, as well as our state and federal accountability systems. Um, I want you to pay particularly close to the, um, items that talk about the press release. Usually this is information from the Virginia Department of Ed in which they provide their analysis of how the state has done and then any particulars about, uh, school districts or schools. And so, um, that information then becomes public, um, and we hope to be sharing some of that with you. Um, we do have some information that will be available to districts and for internal use for analysis and planning for decision-making, and that's August first. And then the rest of the information becomes available as time goes on. What we plan to do for August first, we have a work session, is to share with you, um, the district performance at a glance. And then on August fifteenth, to share with you school-level data that we have and additional, um, information on academic performance. And the eighteenth is ahead of the twenty-second, um, when the, um, state plans to release that information. So that's all that we have at this time.
And, and, and again, just, uh, reiterating that on August first, we will be, um, providing information on the state's new methodology for, um, school accountability and accrediting schools. And that's, it's a significant change from what we currently have, which is primarily SOL test performance and, uh, adding graduation rates in at the high school.
Right, and, um, what the state is attempting to do is to combine their formula with the federal formula. And the federal formula looks at attendance. And so there are additional measures that are coming onboard for accountability purposes.
Questions on what to expect coming forward?
I'm sure you'll have more questions when we get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Matters of the board, um, go ahead and, uh, briefly, uh, review a few items with you guys real quick. Um, there is going to be a superintendent evaluation workshop on September the twenty-fifth. And, uh, the slots fill very quickly. And so what we need to do is let Mr. Butts know if we plan to attend, if we're going to need any accommodations for that, um, as soon as possible, um, so that he can go ahead and make those arrangements. I definitely think it's a worthwhile, um, workshop for us to attend, as many of us that can attend, um, as possible. Um, that being said, are there, oh, one more item, um, committee assignments? You all received, uh, the draft proposal for the committee assignments. And if you have any questions or, uh, remarks on that, um, please feel free to let me know. Ms. Basine, you had a question about the committee assignments?
Um, well, that, that was one of my items, uh, to bring up tonight. Um, so are those, will we be discussing the committee assignments at the next work session? Or are those, those it?
If, if you have some feedback for me, like you want to change it or anything, if you, if you want to just chat with me about it, that's fine. They're, they're not set in stone yet because I know that some folks had some questions about it and the dates and the commitments. But for the most part, I tried to give everybody what they had asked for.
Okay, um, I think it might be a good idea to quick go over what the roles, responsibilities, what the committee's function, actually, you know, what it is, just to be sure we're on the same, everyone is on the same page. Um, I noticed there may be a couple of gaps.
There are a few gaps.
Okay.
When we, when we sent it out, because we were, everyone is trying to figure out scheduling and commitment for right now. And so, in an, in an effort to, um, receive the information and give the information back out, I want it to be timely in that, and that's why it's a draft.
Right, so, okay.
So right now, we have, we, we have another spot in facilities and, um, I think it was the Student Health Advisory Committee. I can put myself on that, that's fine, um, but.
Well, that one, we didn't need to have, too, but the facilities, are you continuing?
Well, I, I wanted to put it out there to see if there was anybody else who, who wanted it as far as the time committed. But we, you know, this goes back to the discussion of, um, there are standing committees that we have. And then there are committees that we have that MPS has had just over time. And if, uh, we want to have a discussion about whether or not to continue those committees, the purpose, the outcomes, the role of the board, very happy, um, to put that, um, as a discussion if the board would like to, to have that discussion. Is that something that you are, um, recommending? I know I kind of put that out there initially.
That, that maybe I'm one out of.
Any, anyone else?
I don't know if anybody else has any feedback.
Okay, Ms. Smith, yes. Okay, well, well, go ahead and provide that feedback to me then. I'm, I'm hearing it from, from you all, if there's anyone else who wants to pursue that. Um, we can certainly, um, consider that in agenda planning as we go forward. And I, and I know that the committees, right now, though, need to get started. So the, the ones that are required for us to be at, Mr. Butts, if you can just go ahead and get me that information so I can send out that, um, so that we have board members committed that are on voting committees. And then the other ones, we can work through. How does that sound, Dr. Boone?
Well, the, the, the only thing I wanted to add is that I think the student support one, and I'm looking at Dr. Harold Lance, the student support one is time-sensitive, gets into August for student reinstatements. Is that, does the support committee do those or we do those now? That's right, the process changed.
That changed.
So the first committees for, um, things like student support, um, probably wouldn't start until September. So, so we do have some time to be able to, to address those. CSEP and the Governor's School calendar meetings, I believe the first meeting for both of those may be early October, end of September. We, we are populating those dates also, um.
WHRO is one of them.
All of those, all of those are like September or later, before they kick off.
Okay, and, um, and so we have a, we had, have a policy committee meeting, which we do need to have. It's currently scheduled for Monday, this upcoming Monday at nine-thirty. Um, we, it's typically the third Friday of the month, but because, um, you know, administration is off on Fridays during the summer, uh, we are holding it on Monday. So I just wanted, I think Ms. Martin is the other policy committee member. So, um, I just wanted to give the heads-up there, uh, that that's coming up on Monday.
Right, and those committees, um, the policy, there's, you, you, you both were the ones that expressed interest. And I think Ms. Campson has expressed some interest in it as well. But if you all can come together and work on the, the times with the staff and, you know, get that together.
Yeah, we'll do that, um, but this Monday, just because then the following week is the work session. So, um, and then Monday, we can talk about, talk about that. Wanted to make sure.
Are there any other thoughts with, uh, regards to matters of the board?
Well, so I have, I have a bit of a list, a list. Um, before we go on the work, for the work session, I can't see what the agenda is for the next work session, but we still have to adopt our norms and code of ethics. Um, I think the sooner we get that on the agenda, the better, um, especially, you know, as this new board starts driving. Um, I'd also like us to consider, this is a great opportunity as a new board, we've talked about this in the past, about, uh, participating in implicit bias training.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and I think this is also a good opportunity to, to think about and consider that. That, that I put kind of as high priority as getting the norms adopted and the code of ethics in place.
Noted.
Madam Chair, so I'd just like to reinforce that. I think, uh, Ms. Basine hit on, uh, some of the same four that I hit. Um, but in particular, I'd just like to provide reinforcement on the implicit and explicit bias training. Uh, the Norfolk Police Department has been involved in undergoing that for about three years now, I think. Uh, been on that committee. And I think in light of, um, recent, recent social media posts and other things that have been discussed, I think would be a good opportunity for the board to, uh, set the tone for the division and say that, uh, again, we have to schedule it and figure it all out. But I think as a board, if we would be willing to, uh, consider that, then it would provide an opportunity for, uh, the outcomes of that to flow into our, our workers aboard and set the tone for the, for the division. So I just want to reinforce, um, reinforce that on the implicit and, uh, explicit bias training in particular.
I know that we've discussed that many times to, to get on. And are you specifically referring to Dr. Gamita from EVMs?
No, no, I'm, no, no one in particular. I just think that if the board can have a discussion with Dr. Boone and see if there's some agreement for us to consider it, then, you know, whatever the appropriate process is for selecting someone, uh, that would be my recommendation. And then, uh, just lastly, going back to the committee piece, you know, we had talked about last couple of years, um, you know, and I think it's, uh, Quinn in his book that describes, you know, should the board be a committee of one? Or should you have these multiple committees? And that sometimes, uh, when you have committees, then it can cause, uh, close relationships between the board and the staff and all those types of things. So I know last year, we, we had some conversation about it. I understand the statutory committees that we have like, uh, CAC and GEAC and, and those. But maybe if there is a plan to do some type of, um, continuation of the retreat at the next work session, the board can just have a conversation around what is our philosophy going to be around committees? And then kind of flow from there, even as we continue to just, uh, do the work that's, that's before us. Uh, because as I reviewed some of the committee, um, descriptions, I think they are legacy descriptions from four or five years ago. And so I think with all that we've talked about with a new board coming together and newly elected, I think it's a perfect opportunity for us to have that philosophical discussion as a board and then maybe even determining that we don't need to have as many committees or maybe some different committees, some other school divisions have.
Are you suggesting that we take stuff off our plate?
Yes, I am, that at least we, at least we consider it. So I just put that out there for, for your consideration.
I think that was, that's well-received, thank you. Okay, well, thank you, everyone, thank you to the staff, thank you, Dr. Boone, for preparing, uh, for.
So speaking of our next meeting, are we starting at four or are we lengthening the meeting?
Um, at, at this moment, right now, we are starting at four. However, um, based on earlier discussion, we might need to start earlier and I will communicate that with you all very soon.
This is for August first?
This is for August the first, correct.
We will discuss that, right?
Oh, yes, yes. Um, is there anybody who cannot come earlier than four o'clock on August the first?
I cannot.
Okay.
I probably cannot.
You probably cannot, okay. Okay, um, okay, um, then would, would it be possible to consider if we go later than six-thirty then? For August the first? So our timeframe for August the first is between four and, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, between four and six-thirty. And so we can either add time in the beginning or we can add time towards the end. Um, and, you know, if we link.
Towards the end.
Towards the end, that might work better, okay. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll get back with that, but it's good to know that starting earlier is really not a good option for some of the board members. Um, I, I, I'm going to go ahead and just, uh, thank everybody for their participation in the, um, recent board training that we went through, um, in Richmond on Monday. And then many of us stayed over for the Conference on Education. We had some, uh, we have very good partners with the Virginia School Board Association that provides some, uh, excellent, um, mini-workshops and guest speakers for us to learn. And just like our teachers do professional development, um, the school board does professional development. In fact, there is, um, there's, there's a goal of being a high-functioning governance team. And, uh, we, we want to commit to that as a board. And part of that is the professional, uh, development training that we go through. And it was, um, it was wonderful to see everyone, everyone participating in that. So with that being said, um, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.